Also, the volunteers on the school building committee are very impressive. They come from all walks of life, giving their time up to take part in this. And I'll tell you, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. Logan.
So, we're blessed. We're blessed that we have a highly engaged and highly qualified group of individuals running our school buildings committee. No other community in this state has a committee like we have. We are lucky to have those folks who are keeping their eye on the ball consistently and constantly. We have a very engaged superintendent and administrators across our schools, who are rowing the boat in the same direction, towards this end goal to provide the best outcome for our kids in those new buildings. Pay attention to that. The other thing that you also have, which doesn't get enough spotlight on, is a town administrator who is so engaged in this process, I have, I don't lose any sleep over this. I have full confidence in Sean that he's going to make this happen for what he said and what we brought forward to make it happen. So, consider ourselves lucky as we move forward in this process, because not everybody's in the same place where we're at.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I have been following town council for many, many years. And while I've had many objections to things they've done over the time, over time, this school project is the best thing we've done for this town in a long time. The town administrator, Mr. Rodriguez, the rest of the council, have done an exceptional job in promoting and seeing that the project comes to fruition.
Thank you, Mr. Amorant.
Thank you. I also have faith in the building committee, the school building committee, that they're going to get this school built. It is a very ambitious project. It is going to put a strain on the taxpayers. But I think what we should focus on, assuming that the building is going to be on time and on budget, which I trust it will be, is that the quality of the education increases significantly. There is no reason why Middletown should not have the number one school system in the state. This building will provide us with the, with state-of-the-art resource, a building. We should also have state-of-the-art education that comes along with it. So, I'm going to support it. It is a huge number and it will put a strain on taxpayers, but I think it also is going to be worth it in the long run.
Thank you. Moving on to the next question, Mr. Rodriguez. According to a double AARP survey conducted in Rhode Island, seventy-one percent of Rhode Island residents aged forty-five plus are extremely or very concerned about having streets that are safe for everyone to use. What concerns do you have about the safety of Middletown streets or neighborhoods, if any? And if elected, what initiatives or projects would you champion to ensure safety for all residents?
Thank you, Erin. So, we just approved, we're ninety percent plans approved for the sidewalk that goes from the bottom of Tickets all the way up to Second Beach. And, you know, we tried to do the best we could as compromise with some folks over there, residents over there who had concerns. The other thing I'd also do, we've done some studies in different areas. Traffic calming studies, they're called. Some make sense, some seem to didn't make so much sense. But what I really want to focus on next is Paradise Avenue and that area to the beach. Lot of folks, there's a lot of things we need to focus on, but that particular area gets a lot of traffic, a lot of pedestrian, bicycle, joggers, walkers, whatever you want to call it. I think we need to, to make sure either the gutters get filled in, or instead of, some folks here are in favor of the roundabout, I'm not. I'd love to take that roundabout money if we get it and put it towards safety on Paradise Avenue.
Thank you, Mr. Toronto.
Thank you. When I just heard that question, I thought you were in reference to safety in regards to our police officers and supporting our police officers in what's happening today across the nation, in regards to folks coming into our community, we're not aware of it. And if you think it's not happening here in Middletown or on Aquinic Island, I would challenge you to look into it. We got a big decision ahead of us this year, and we need closed borders. We cannot burden this. We're, from a state standpoint, we shoulder a lot of the burden of this open territory. So, I'm all about supporting our police, our safety, and I agree with Paul. We want to make sure our traffic flow is safe. We're looking at speed regulators, we're looking at speed bumps in certain areas, we're looking at sidewalks. So, it's very important to, you know, pay attention to that in helping our community get around, but also
Thank you.
nationally, we need to take that into consideration as well.
Mr. Viveras.
Thank you. Whether we like it or not, Middletown is going to become the Martin Vineyard of Rhode Island. And that's going to be a problem. And one of the things, you talk about safety. I have been after the council for over a year to go to the state and to put red light cameras at our intersections because people are running the red lights. I myself is a victim of somebody doing just that. But I hear that, well, you have to petition the state and because it's public property, I mean, you gotta get the okay from the state. When I looked at it, you could do it, but the only restriction is that you have to notify the public at least thirty days in advance before you activate it. But I think red light cameras would cause, would add a lot of safety. I see people, they stop at a light, it says, it says no right turn on red. They take a right turn, nothing. So, I think that's one way to look at it.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
Thank you. So, I think we continue to move ahead, maybe not as fast as people would like, but Aquinic Ave took forever. But it's nice to have a bike lane down either side and a sidewalk, especially when we have a school and now we're going to have a middle high school with an entrance right off of there. So, that is, that is helpful. I am also in favor of the Purgatory Road sidewalk. I think that is going to put pedestrians, it also comes with the space for bicycles, so that is helpful as well. And Mr. Viveras talked about red light cameras, but the town has agreed to put in cameras in school zones, and that is currently going on that work, so I'm all for, I'm all for that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Conrertin.
Yes, and ditto one more time. I think it's, it's tough with us losing Council Tessier. She was really on top of this, that was her baby. But the things they mentioned, Purgatory Road project, looking at Paradise Avenue, the new town center, if that goes in, is slated to have a bike path going behind it. The hope is that we can connect that further to Burma Road and other places. And I think it's just going to be paying attention to opportunities and working with DOT and other areas where we can institute these things. It's, it's having the space, it's having the land, and it's trying to plan ahead.
Thank you. Mr. Logan.
I think we're starting to take the right path by continuing safety studies in densely populated areas where pedestrians would be walking, sidewalks on Purgatory, High Street. Pick your poison, Paradise Avenue, figuring out what we can do to make it more safe. I think one of the things Council Tessier brought forward that we need to make sure that we stay on top of as we move into this new legislative body is the Green and Complete Streets Ordinance that will automatically create passageways for pedestrians and bicyclists as well as additional safety measures, right? It's built into it, so much more to come on that. And then finally, increased enforcement. You know, one of the things, if we want to prevent people from speeding, increase the enforcement. We're going to put the cameras in the school zones, and that's a great first step, but is there other areas in town where we could up that enforcement? Maybe get some more cameras in place, find ways to do that in a much more sustainable manner. One, to prevent the bad things from happening, but two, potentially bring in revenue to the town as well.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
I'm not sure what illegal immigration has to do with any of this. It's an unfortunate mention. I would only say this. Mr. Amorant and his family were immigrants, and they've created quite a profitable enterprise for them, and it's helped the town substantially. Now, Mr. Amorant and I have significant differences of opinion.
Please stay to the question, please.
Well, I'm trying to, but
I can repeat the question if you'd like.
No, Mr. Toronto decided to change it.
But you are asked to answer the question, not respond to anyone else's responses.
The, the response from Mr. Rodriguez is what my response will be.
Thank you. Mr. Amorant.
Okay, with regard to safety and streets, I think that's the question. I'm going to be honest, I don't know the information. I would actually lean on the police to kind of drive that strategy as far as safety goes. What I will say is I am very familiar with Lower Aquinic Avenue. I think it could be the jewel of Middletown. I think the streets and the sidewalks down there are atrocious, and they're an embarrassment to the island and to Middletown. That is the one place on the island that has the most foot traffic, and it's the biggest revenue generating area of the island, and I think we should start focusing on improving it. I think, no one mentions Lower Aquinic Avenue ever, and I think it's just a huge blind spot and a miss that this council, this council and former councils have ignored. I'm sorry, I think, I think that's an investment that Middletown should start looking into making. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Von Villas.
Yes, I don't have enough, I want to say, deep knowledge about a lot of the things that they're talking about up on the east side. But I do say that one of the, probably one of the most important things that we did was installing those, with the company installing cameras next to the schools to slow down people near the schools because zooming through there is a danger, and that was an important choice.
Thank you. And now I will move on to the next question. Livable communities include essential features that allow residents of all ages and backgrounds to thrive. This includes safe and varied transportation options. What do you think Middletown should do to improve transit options for residents and visitors both on and off the island?
I know this is a top issue for a lot of the businesses in the area and also Aquinic Island in regards to our lack of parking and for people to be able to come to the community and work their way around the community. I also know that within Middletown in regards to our school system and our after-school programs, we had to address an issue in regards to bus transportation, trying to make sure that everyone has access to the services that are being offered. And we formed a department, the home outreach, excuse me, the outreach department in Middletown was a department that I started, and we're looking at transportation as how we can provide the people access to the different services that are being offered across the community. So, and we understand transportation. If they can't get there, then they can't take advantage of the opportunity that's there for them. And I'm really focused on the school level for transportation, for after-school.
Thank you, Mr. Viveras.
Biggest problem with transportation, we have too many cars. We don't have, the island is just not big enough, the roads aren't wide enough. It's just a problem getting on and off the island. You try to go down West Main, West Main Road between four-thirty and five-thirty, or go up West Main Road, and traffic is backed, is stopped all the way from Wyatt Road all the way to McDonald's. They bump a the bumper going up there. There's, and things are just going to, just going to get worse unless... One of the problems, one thing I suggested to the state was that they used to have the railroads that went over the river. To go from Newport into Tivonan. Now, you got the railroad coming from Newport, from Boston, coming down the Fall River, it's in the plan and go New Bedford.
Thank you.
That's one thing we should look at.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Welch.
Erin, could I ask you to repeat the question?
Absolutely. Livable communities include essential features that allow residents of all ages and backgrounds to thrive. This includes safe and varied transportation options. What do you think Middletown should do to improve transit options for residents and visitors on and off the island?
I do not have a good answer for this. I don't know how much effect we can have over Ripta because I immediately think of buses for people that don't have their car. So, I'm going to shift to bicycle and pedestrian transportation, which we've spoken about here before, that there's just not a whole lot of room. But when we have the opportunity to add a bike lane or add a sidewalk, that we keep doing it. That's all I got.
Thank you. Mr. Conrertin.
All right, this one is definitely out of my element, but obviously, the town can lobby the state, Ripta, for more bus routes. And I almost want to push back a little bit, say, you know what? There's plenty of transportation right now. The problem is how do we all gel together? You have cars, you have motorcycles, you have regular bicycles, you have e-bikes. They're all over the place. So, how does that all come together? The other thing we're talking about from out of town, I guess you could see if we could do park and rides. But I guess that would be a lot that local politicians would have to reach out to the state for help with that. And I know there is some long-term planning, like with the bike route on West Main Road, but I believe that's going to be around 2030, a little later.
Thank you. Mr. Logan.
So, we can lobby Ripta, but it's going to be upon rider fare for them to expand the lines across Middletown. And what do we have? A housing problem. We're not going to give the riders for the buses. It's going to be really tough, right? But there's a couple of things that you probably don't know. We have some gems in Middletown. The senior center is one of them. The senior center will take you where you need to go. If you have to go to an appointment as a senior, call them up, they'll bring you. We have an outreach coordinator in Lori Turner who will figure out transportation for you as well. We have programs that exist today. You just don't know about them, you're not taking advantage of them. So, I think it's going to be a mixed use. I think there's going to be a lot of emphasis for me again on that Green and Complete Streets Ordinance so that we can create bike lanes, better pedestrian travel, especially for places like down on Lower Aquinic Ave, which should be heavily traveled, but a park and ride, so people could park and walk down.
Thank you, Mr. Frank.
A great deal of the traffic is people who do not live in Middletown but work here. And until we establish more working availability for them, they will continue to live out of town and come into Middletown. You will notice that most of the traffic is either, most of the traffic problems are either early in the morning or late in the afternoon, particularly when schools are out, which creates additional problems. And again, you know, everything is connected. And until we solve the housing problem, we're really not going to solve any of the other major problems that confront this town.
Thank you, Mr. Amorant.
Okay, a little out of my element on this one too, but just thinking about this logically, there's only so much traffic that this island can support. We have East Main and West Main, there are main arteries. I live off of East Main. It is heavily trafficked. I don't know, we're going to keep adding, if we add more housing, NOAA, Coast Guard are coming, a lot more families, a lot more cars. This, I don't know the answer to this, but it's going to be, there's going to be more traffic on the island. And I think it's something that we should be concerned about. I think the state needs to come in and improve those main arteries and help alleviate that issue. It's already an issue, it's only going to be exacerbated over the next few years.
Thank you, Ms. Von Villas.
I think a lot of us up here don't know a lot about the subject, and I certainly am among those people. What comes to mind with me is the motorcycle riders and the bike riders and the safety issue related to them. I'm just wondering if there isn't some way to increase, I guess, knowledge about behaving properly on both of those items? I mean, it seems to me that it's not just building bike lanes or whatever, but it's also having the people who ride on these particular vehicles to also obey the laws. That's important too.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
Thanks, Erin. Like Peter, I'm a member of the comp plan, and I think Leon comes to those meetings as well, but we're, we're trying to focus on housing, we've tackled that. We need to tackle transportation, that's coming up. I met with Terry Sullivan, who's the director of, new director of the land trust, and he asked me, he said, Paul, if there's one thing you could give Middletown, what would you do? And I said, I'd like to see an island bike path. That's what I'd see, number one for safety for bikes, maybe get some of the bikes off the roads. Also, I think Burma Road is the key here to, if we could work with the state and the Navy to develop that, to get traffic. A lot of traffic comes in from out of town, Navy's the biggest employer, right? So, if we could work with those folks and get Burma Road, in my opinion, to allow relief to our main roads, expand the bus routes, and Burma Road also tie into what Newport's doing in the north end, continue to work with the state for traffic calming issues, and really enforcement, just kind of just slow them down. Because that's what really people are complaining about is the speed.
Thank you, sir. Okay, now, this is the last question before we move into the lightning round, and we'll start with you, Mr. Viveras. What environmental initiatives or projects would you like to continue to support or start to address in the town if you are elected? Some examples might be clean energy, green infrastructure, protecting open spaces, beaches, et cetera.
I would concentrate on open spaces. One thing is the development. If I have a piece of property and I'm going to develop it, I can only develop thirty-five percent of it. I can leave the rest natural. Yet, the town should be able to develop thirty-five percent of the town. And one of the things you have to protect is the watershed. There's runoff, and I know we live on an island, but the water is your main source of life. So, I would protect the watershed mainly.
Thank you. Mr. Welch.
Thank you. So, piggyback on Anton, I agree with our watersheds are certainly, to me, a big issue. I have a well, a lot of people out by me on the east side also have well water, so that's important. And for Newport and Middletown that uses Newport water, the reservoirs go right into your faucet, so that's important. The purchase of the Huguenor nurseries is huge for me in a number of ways. One of them is the fact that, you know, agriculture has carve-outs when it comes to what's allowed to be put on the land. And when the town owns the property and that no longer is happening, we can do a much better job about eliminating pesticide and herbicide use. So, that'll help our watershed directly. And that's enough.
Thank you. Mr. Conrertin.
I guess the big one, I'm on the beach commission, so I'll go with that. Is the coastal erosion and basically the destruction of our beaches with the storms that are coming in. We've had significant discussions. President Rodriguez is also a member of the beach commission, trying to figure out how to slow that down. And there's no real clear answer. You know, a lot of the projects, I don't know the exact location, I think it was New Jersey, they did a huge sand replenishment project. Next storm that came in just took two million dollars away. I know the town is looking at some ideas for that, we're not far into it, but the beach is my baby, and if we can protect that, that's great because otherwise, the second beach parking lot might be a marina in fifty years.
Thank you. Mr. Logan.
So, I echo that. I think the beach is a gem here in Middletown. We need to do more to make sure it's preserved for the long haul. But I'm going to take a different path because I think about where we're going from a development perspective, right? We're going to put some new housing in, it's going to bring more people. Our wastewater management system, it needs some work. You may not have looked under the covers, but I've started to look under the covers, meaning make sure our pump stations are up and working and fully functional. Next fifty-year storm that comes, puts those things underwater, we're in a very bad place. So, a big piece of that critical infrastructure for me, especially as we continue to grow and create more density on the island, is ensure that our wastewater is taken care of because that will, that will sabotage our drinking water.
Thank you. Mr. Frank.
Beaches. Anybody who's been to Second Beach during high tide knows that at high tide, the tide is almost up to the dunes. The next twenty or thirty years, they will be flooding in the parking lots and the roadways. Two reservoirs at risk, Gardner Pond and Easton's Pond. Lower Aquinic Avenue will also see regular flooding, pushing out local businesses. Easton's Point is already seeing significant erosion at the end of Shore Drive. If we do not address this, tourism will decline and will no longer be a significant part of the town's economy. We need to develop businesses to employ full-time residents. This necessity of developing long-term housing is critical. We need to address this flooding that's coming to us. We do not have much time to correct it.
Thank you, Mr. Amorant.
Thank you. Our environment is one of the most important issues to me. Our watershed, as others have mentioned, is under extreme pressure from runoff. It affects our ponds, drinking water, and beaches. The health of our environment is directly tied to the health of our residents and our economy. I'd like to see a science and data-based approach to measure pollutants and identify problem areas on the island. We can do it. I actually spoke with the Aquinic Land Trust. They received a two-million-dollar resiliency grant. They're interested in a project like that, to put sensors in our streams, collect real-time data, monitor it, and then make fact, again, fact-based policies to address the issue. I don't think we have enough data on this issue, and this is an opportunity to work towards that goal.
Thank you, Ms. Von Villas.
I'm not really knowledgeable a lot about this, but however, I do remember that the council, at one point, we were talking about doing some kind of sewerage down on, down on the east side, not near the beaches, but on the east side. And it seemed to me that there was a lot of resistance by the residents because, for whatever reason. It seems to me that we need to explore that again, and perhaps that would relieve some of the issues down there. But I'm not sure how successful we'll be.
Thank you. Mr. Rodriguez.
Thank you, Erin. So, Second Beach, as Chris mentioned, is the jewel of town. Don't mess with the beach, right? We have a problem, we're losing a foot a year. That's what we're losing. And Mr. Frank said, you know, by, I think we had just had a study, by 2070, the water level's supposed to be up to the driveway of the Wave Avenue pump station. So, we need to work, and we need to work furiously towards protecting that beach the best we can. We need to continue to support cleansing our rivers, Maiford rivers. We put, you know, cleansing mechanisms in place that, where filters so they get cleansed before the water gets to the drinking water. Educating our residents on fertilizers, that's a big one, that contribute to pollution. And algae blooms that end up in our reservoirs. Ninety percent of our sewage goes through to Wave Avenue, from West Main Road all the way to Wave Avenue. We're trying to currently leverage the federal and state money, millions, to change that where we can get it to Connington by upgrading Connington. So, that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you. Mr. Toronto.
Okay, thank you. And yes, there's a lot of good stuff going on at the council level. We've done a lot with pump stations, slip lining a lot of our sewer lines on the Easton's Point area, Purgatory area. It's, we need to, we need to focus on our drinking water. I mean, that is, to me, very, very important. And when I first got on the council, I was concerned about litter. And so, I started a program within the town to create a litter ordinance because when litter, when people throw stuff out their windows and the storms come and they just wash the water right down to the stormwater drains and out into the ocean. We work very closely with Clean Ocean Access, so I'm a big advocate of picking up litter and making sure that we keep Middletown clean, keep our drinking waters clean. And if you haven't seen Woodsy Owl, he's part of the U.S. Forest Association. He's Smokey the Bear's right-hand person, and his motto is, "Give a hoot, don't pollute."
Thank you, sir. Okay, and now we're going to move on to the lightning round. We have four questions. That's okay. So, they're going to review the audience questions. We'll have two additional questions from the audience that you'll be able to answer after we do the lightning round. We have four questions, and I ask that candidates raise your hand if you're in support of the statement that I'm about to read. The first one has two parts, you have two options. More than ten years ago, Middletown voted to hold nonpartisan local elections. On March eighteenth, the council voted to schedule a public hearing to revisit this issue. Do you favor keeping the existing nonpartisan system? You can raise your hand if you favor keeping the existing nonpartisan system. Thank you. Or do you favor reinstating the previous system? Thank you. Next question. Please raise your hand if you agree that Middletown should return to the pre-COVID policy for residents to receive two beach parking passes for the price of one.
That's an easy one, Erin.
I did not develop these questions. Number three, are you in favor of having a homestead provision for Middletown property taxes for homeowners? Okay, and the last question. Raise your hand if you support a stronger island alliance Raise your hand if you support a stronger island alliance to collaborate on career, technical, and education, or CTE, and workforce development programs at CCRI Newport to enable Aquinic Island residents to be workforce and career-ready for the future of work. Excellent, unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now we have two more questions. And we will start with Mr. Welch. Okay. So, Mr. Welch, and then we'll go right down the line again. The first three years of loan payments for the school bond is interest-only. The loan payments will then go up. Taxes will have to go up to pay the increased loan payments due. How will you prevent residents being forced to sell? The wealthy sc- Just that? Okay.
When the school bond was put out in the first place, uh we forecasted that there would have to be tax increases in two years, two years apart, because there would be two bonds that you would have to go out to. This year was a perfect example of Sean, you know, we we did the the tiered tax, uh put more of the burden on the non-resident. Uh and like I said before, six cents per thousand dollars of sets value is what everybody's taxes went up. So that took the bite out of the first bump. I'm not sure what he's gonna be able to come up with, if anything, for the next one, um except to let everybody know that it's coming. And um I don't have a fix for that.
Thank you.
Uh that's a good question. I will say, and it's outside the window of that, but we do have two bonds that are gonna be falling off uh in the fire project, fire department, in the police department, so that'll help when that happens. I'm counting on Town Administrator, he's a financial whiz, and I have full support.
Thank you. Mr. Logan.
I agree. There's other bonds that will be coming off that can help pay for that tax burden on the schools to ease it, ease that burden that's going to the taxpayers. Um one thing that I will say, pay very close attention to what happens at Town Hall. Our finance director is fantastic. Mark will ensure that we have the best rates on those bonds by going out renegotiating those rates. He will be paying very close attention to the markets, how the markets ebb and flow, and ensure that we're locked into rates that are most advantageous for the town. This is part of his charge, right? So he will constantly monitor that, and I have full confidence in him and Sean to make that happen.
Thank you. Mr. Frank.
Not only will the two bond issues for the police and the fire station uh be rolling over and reducing the tax burden of the economy, but the Town Administrator and the Town Finance Director will, as interest rates drop, renegotiate our interest rates, and that will have a significant effect on the town's tax burden.